Neighborhood centers. So, um, we're excited for the presentation. Um, anyone who hasn't been here, we've got bathrooms in this hallway. Uh, feel free to get some, um, food and coffee. This is gonna be a more of a work session type of meeting. Um, real casual, so we'll do about a forty-five, forty-five minute, uh, presentation or so, and then we'll open it up for our Q and A if you guys would like. And with that, we'll go around the room and do introductions. So if you wanna start, Mayor?
Hello, my name's Robert Murray. I'm the mayor of Waxahachie.
Susanna Wedra. I'd see you there. Susanna Wedra, Commissioner.
Richard Don, Commissioner.
Randall McMillan, Mayor Pro Tem.
Daniel Ferris, Chair of the Planning Board.
Matt Hubert, Assistant Town Manager and Town Engineer for Waxahachie. He's just assistant. She's one of our favorites, though.
I'm a visitor, Tom Smith, Mayor Pro Tem of Weddington.
Also a visitor, my name is Joe Nylund, and I work for BGE, Civil Engineering and Landscape Architecture Consulting Company. Got some great projects here in Waxahachie with Lisa and Janet. It's been a, a pleasure developing here.
I'm also a visitor, Patrick Blazek, City Monroe Plan Department.
Blair Israel, Senior Planner.
Lauren LaFawn, Planning Technician.
Uh, Madison Miller, also with the Town of Waxahachie, Senior Planner.
Pam Murphy of Waxahachie, I'm a taxpayer.
Linda Varnum, Engineering.
James Kelly, Town of Waxahachie, Traffic Transportation.
Jeff Wells, Town Manager.
Janet Perano, Planner for the Town of Waxahachie.
Chris Rice, Engineering Technician, Sedimentation and Erosion Control.
Alright, I think that's everybody. Um, take it away, Randall. Thank you.
Okay, one second, we'll go ahead and get that pulled up for ya. We're working on that. Um, now, I'm gonna be talking, obviously, about how we can design new neighborhoods with open space, but I'd like to emphasize that it is, also adds value to the project, adds value to the developer, adds value to the residents, and of course, to the community at large. Am, am I in control of the slides so that... Yeah, there we go. Um, I'm gonna be drawing from several books I've written, Merle by Design, Planning for Design in Country. Next slide, um, envisioning better communities for the subfinal, seeing more options and making wiser choices. Uh, next slide, i- i- is there a way to, that, that I can control the slides? Cause I'd like to go through some of them very quickly. What, what do I need to do to advance the slides?
Do we wanna just let him present his on his end? Lisa? Let him share his screen.
Randall, if you have the PowerPoint up, just share your screen and you'll have control of your PowerPoint.
Okay, share screen. I've just, uh, okay. Now we've gone back from the PowerPoint to, I'm looking at a picture of your meeting room.
So right by your leave button is an up arrow that says "Share Screen." So hit Share, and then Share Your PowerPoint.
Hmm, yes, I'm, I'm... The Share button has disappeared.
I think you can hear me through the mic.
Mic, camera, more. Maybe it's under more. No.
Yeah, you gotta pick the screen you wanna share. You have two screens?
Oh, it says, no, I don't have to say... Oh, it says, there's something that says "Stop Sharing."
You're sharing, you're sharing right now, so just pull up the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sharing according to the screen because it gives me an option to stop sharing, but I'm not seeing anything on the screen except, uh, the interior of your meeting room.
Is your PowerPoint open?
Uh, my PowerPoint is, is open, um...
And then click "Present Mode."
Let's see. Okay. Does it, uh, I'm, I'm looking at my PowerPoint, uh, right now, and View. I don't see a Share button on my PowerPoint screen.
No, you don't need to share from PowerPoint. You just need to go into Presentation Mode from PowerPoint. You're already sharing.
Okay, Presentation Mode, alrighty. Then View, um, let's see, Slide, Oops Master, I'm on this thing. Slideshow, yeah, I'm hitting Slideshow. Uh, from beginning, here we go. Wonderful. I truly apologize for that technical, uh, glitch. Um, small towns, many small towns have a lot of open space anyway, uh, as they were originally planned and designed with Central Greens, Commons, Courthouse Squares, like this one in Edington, um, uh, this one from, uh, Tennessee, Kentucky, uh, Maryland, West Virginia, numerous mass, and these places are often used as community gathering points. Brunswick, Maine, where I live right now, uh, the Town Common, all these places, uh, you know, have a central open space, and it'd be very nice to have miniature versions of that in every new development, neighborhood open spaces. So we, unfortunately, many towns have had conventional zoning only and have, uh, not seen opportunities for better alternatives. This is a town in Connecticut that progressed from nineteen forty-two to nineteen eighty-seven with conventional zoning, and they didn't have any open space left because they never, um, planned for it. Uh, and this is the kind of build-out that you see, and the subdivision signs that you see on the left, uh, you know, are the result of subdivision ordinances that, for instance, took this rural area where my wife grew up and created nothing but wall-to-wall subdivision over a period of thirty, forty years. Uh, here's one way to develop, um, in water and sewer with half-acre lots with no open space, not even around the pond, and an alternative way of getting the same number of lots and just downsize them from twenty thousand square feet to twelve thousand. That would be a hundred twenty by a, uh, a hundred. And we have a central open space that everyone can enjoy that adds value to everybody's lot, as opposed to the conventional method. So the developer actually, you know, benefits because he can, um, sell a property with value-added open space, uh, before and after, again. So, on a townwide basis, we'd like to map out, um, uh, number-one build-out scenarios and number-two potential open space networks. So here's a town in Massachusetts that looks like this today, and we did a study to show what it would look like filled up with developments according to their current zoning. Um, as a way to avoid that, you adopt a, a map of, uh, potential second, primary and secondary conservation areas, which I'll explain in a moment. Um, and when you do that, uh, open space on each undeveloped parcel can be mapped out in advance so that they become interconnected and more than just, uh, a blob of green here and a blob of green there. Well, we, towns need to choose which site features to protect and which site features, unfortunately, are gonna be removed. So if you wanna save woodlands, for instance, um, you build on, uh, you know, part of the farmland, uh, and you save all the woods. If you want to save, uh, farmland, you do the opposite. You put all the homes in the woods, and then, uh, all the farmland can be preserved. The benefits are multiple. The, the, the town gets to, uh, have more open space, uh, at the end of the day, subdivision residents have pleasant places to, uh, walk, uh, and enjoy wildlife or play ball, and developers lower their costs, they experience faster sales, and very often have premium lot prices, at least on the lots that are, uh, closest to or about the open space. Now, the, the process that we follow is a little bit different from what most towns follow. It really begins with a site visit. This is really essential, and not only for Planning Board members, but towns, staff, the developer, and I like to include, include the butters, so that the subdivision doesn't become a rude surprise. They get, they become involved from the get-go in a very informal way. They're introduced to the land at the same time the Planning Board or Planning Commission members are, so everyone can discover and evaluate the special features of each site. So we're on a site walk in, uh, Southeastern Pennsylvania where, uh, we're putting the, um, resource plans on the hood of the car and the, uh, sketch plan. Uh, we walk around the property, this is Wellington, Connecticut, uh, we have the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, um, the developer, myself, his engineer, and we really learn a lot when we're out on the ground. It's so much different from looking at a piece of paper in a meeting room. Uh, this is three-dimensional, um, whereas the meeting room of the piece of paper is two-dimensional and you don't really see the things. In upstate New York, I walked a property which is filled with wildflowers, this one in particular, and the developer said, "Well, that's pretty." Um, and I said, "Yes, uh, but this is in an area where your current plan was, uh, proposing to have houses." And he said, "Well, um, well, this is a nice place for homes. I like to have the houses among the trees, not in the farmland." And I said, "Well, that's your choice. You can put the homes in the woods and, uh, uh, if you wish, uh, and save the farmland, but I, I wanna let you know a little bit more about this flower." And I happen to know that he graduated from Loyola University and, uh, attended a graduate high school. So I said, "Chuck, do you know what this plant is?" And he said, "No." I said, "It's a trillium." He said, "What's a trillium?" I said, "It has three leaves and three petals." He said, "So what?" I said, "It's named after the Holy Trinity, and in medieval times, people that disturbed that plant didn't go over very nice place in the afterlife. But it's up to you whether you put the houses on top of the wild card or put the houses in the, in the farmland." So this is what he did. Uh, he preserved, uh, all the, uh, the woodlands by, uh, building the houses on the three fields, which is what you see in that, uh, in that diagram there. Very often, we just design a, a sketch right in the field while everything is fresh in the minds of the Planning Board, Planning Commission, the, uh, the applicant, uh, maybe a butters, and we get a, a sketch, and we might go back to the meeting room. It's still a public meeting, no final decisions are taken, but we get everyone's ideas together and we sketch them out. It's like a mini charrette. Davidson, North Carolina held a mini charrette for many, many years, and it's a, it's a way of getting to a, a consensus on the first meeting. Um, this would be a place that, uh, would be a keeper, in, in my view, because it's a perfect place, this old farmland, to be a, a trail through a subdivision. Uh, in fact, that's what is shown here in the surface subdivision. That was a, uh, a public road during Civil War times, and the troops went up and down that road. Uh, but the development plan initially was going to wipe out the road, wipe out the trees, and put the houses everywhere. So we suggested a conservation design that would protect the historic Civil War road and the trees along it, and the developer said, "You know, I'm gonna get more money for the homes that, uh, back up to that greenway, and I'm probably gonna get more money for the homes that are a block or two away from the greenway. If I'm out in a farm field and see a large tree, I'll try to design around it. I'm not gonna do handstands or somersaults or, or go to great lengths, but I will note it, and if there's an easy way to design around a large tree or a row of trees, a fence row, a hedgerow, we'll do that." Now, the design process I follow is, is pretty simple. It consists of identifying the conservation areas first, then locating the house sites, then connecting the homes with streets and drawing in the lot lines. And that's opposite to the way that most engineers work, that the first thing they do is design the streets, is lay out the streets, and then they divide the, the remaining land into house lots, and therefore, conservation areas never come into it. So here's a conventional plot. This is for an actual piece of property in the Raleigh Durham area, and, uh, that's what it looks like before development. Part of the conservation areas would be the unbuildable land, like the shallows, oh, you can't get a septic on, or the blue land, which is flood plain or wetlands. Then other types of conservation areas are buildable. For instance, it, uh, might be the view shed on the left-hand road, the view shed in from Jaeger's Mill Road, or the orchard, uh, along the main road, or the historic homes in the lower, left-hand corner, or stone wall, uh, or parts of the meadow. So there are many places that could be built on because they're not wet or flood-prone or steep, but would add value. So this is a type of unconstrained land that we'd like to preserve, that, uh, could be easily, um, what is what remains. Step two is to populate the development area with houses, so that everybody gets a great view, and the developer adds value to the lots. Number three is to connect the homes with streets and trails, and the fourth is to draw on the lot lines. And you can see that this is rather different from the original design. Uh, the original design on the land would look like this, and the improved design would look like that, in a close-up versus the close-up of the conservation area. So, I suggest that, uh, towns, uh, you know, ask developers to do two sketch plans, uh, in order to determine the density. The sketch plan for the conventional would show what a normal development would look like, and we'd count the number of house lots, and of course, uh, that sketch would have to be realistic. You can't find homes or streets in wetlands or steep slopes. So we do a, a sketch plan, uh, and a, an alternative plan, or, uh, this is a sketch of the conventional on the left and a sketch of the conservation on the right. And all of this is very low cost because we don't have, uh, much engineering at all. The engineering is, at this stage, locate the topography, locate the wetlands, locate the utility easements, but the reengineering doesn't come until later. We do, we design a subdivision before we engineer it. This is a, what a developer had planned to do before he came to my presentation in western Massachusetts thirty years ago, and that's what he came up with afterwards. I didn't really know that until years later, cause I was not involved, but the town came back and he said, "We wanna take you to this subdivision that you're responsible for." Um, and I had no idea that the developer changed his plan during, during, uh, or right after the talk. Victor, uh, New York asked me to redesign the, the conventional plan on the left, but it had already gone to preliminary plan stage, and that was game over. Once the developer reaches preliminary plan, he has sunk a lot of money into engineering. So the, uh, design that the town wanted on the right was dead on arrival. The key is to do the designs before the heavy engineering at the preliminary plan stage occurs. Stratford Hall is one you can visit in Weddington. Um, the, uh, developer came to me and said, "Would you help me with this plan that I've just inherited? I bought this property, uh, and I really don't like the plan, and I don't think the town likes the plan. What can you do?" So, we, we followed the four-step process and came up with this. Uh, this turned out to be a conservancy lot, cause there was a very large existing, uh, home there, uh, and it had, um, by creating a ten-acre conservancy lot, we basically preserved open space at a very critical, uh, part of the property in terms of the public view shed. And on the other end of the property, we conserved all the, uh, the woods around the pond, which of course, did just disappear, um, among house lots, the back ends of house lots, uh, in the conventional plan. So this is what it looks like today. Nice four-board fence around the perimeter, um, and this is a view from the public road. Uh, the, the homes are clustered on one-third acre lots. It's a one-acre zone. Um, if you, today, you'll see these trees are much larger, cause this is about twenty years ago. And so these, these large homes, uh, fit very well and sold very well on lots one-third the normal sums for that zoning district in Weddington. And these are the, uh, the deep dark woods where the pond is located. So I encourage towns to map out potential open space networks ahead of time, uh, in their comprehensive plans, and if you do that, for instance, this is one from Pennsylvania, uh, in the lower part of this map, you can see this configuration, and that became the guiding factor for the developer who developed his, uh, uh, resource plan accordingly. So you can see the correspondence between the town's plan and the developer's plan. And then the developer, when he filled it in with the, uh, development, preserved everything the town wanted to have preserved and got every single house lot that he wanted. Uh, the open space can be owned by an HLA, a land trust, the county, a municipality. Uh, it's permanently protected by a conservation easement. That could be held by a land trust, county, municipality, state or federal agency. The management of that open space is usually protected by an open space management plan that the town would require and, uh, review and approve, and that would be, uh, something that the Home Association inherits. Suburban examples of free neighborhood design, um, uh, come in, you know, several varieties. Some have off-lot individual septics in the open space, some have off-lot shared septics in the open space, and some have off-lot community systems in the open space. So in, in an area with water and sewer where you're normally building at three to the acre to begin with, then the house lots have got to be, instead of being something like thirteen thousand square feet, they need to be something more like sixty-five hundred, seven thousand square feet. And then half the land can be, remain open, which is where you would put the individual septics, the shared septics, or the community systems. So here's an example of individual septics in the common open space. Um, and I say without public water, uh, house lots can be reduced to half acre in size and, uh, in areas where there's already three to the acre and house lots are already down at thirteen thousand square feet, they can be reduced to sixty-five hundred square feet. Uh, Strathmore Farms in Madison, Connecticut is an example. Um, these households in here, uh, have individual septic systems in the common open space, which is right behind that whiteboard fence, uh, and they are clustered in a village hamlet formation, which you'll see, uh, that, this is where the septic systems are located, between the development and the road. So the septic systems buffer the homes from the road. Uh, you can see the individual septic systems right there in the meadow. And this is what the subdivision looks like. It looks like a hamlet, it looks like a vi- village. It doesn't look like a standard subdivision. The septic tanks are usually on the lot because each homeowner is responsible for pumping his septic wastes, and, uh, the Home Association, uh, uh, only would give them a reminder. Pump your, your septic system, and if you don't, we'll pump it and, uh, put that under your assessment. The septic systems themselves are also the homeowner's, uh, responsibility because each one is attached to, uh, each individual home. Community septic systems can be located in the common open space, um, and this is Partridge Berry Place in, uh, Exrich, Massachusetts. The septic system is in the upper right-hand corner. Uh, again, it is a very village-like, um, cluster. Uh, this is a rain garden in the middle where the stormwater is infiltrated back into the ground. It becomes a landscape feature. It's designed jointly by an engineer and a landscape architect, so it is not only functional, but it's also beautiful. And that's a, a view of the, uh, common septic system in the, uh, open space. Here for Knoll, uh, which is developed at three to the acre, um, and the homes there are on five thousand square foot lots, are, they're acc- they're serviced by a central well and a central septic system. Um, so the homes here are back up to a lot of open space. They are built around a, a village green with a pond. Um, it's an interesting development because the homes, there are only three types of homes that the developer built, and they're all very, it's on the same house, and there are only three types of colors that he chose, maybe four, and, but he chose the colors so that it, it, they're all varied and mixed up. Uh, in order to reduce potential monotony, look what he did, and the On the top, half of the slide, you'll see the homes at forty-five degree angles to the road. But they also face each other diagonally across the road. And that breaks up the monotony. This is what it looks like on a site plan where he has angled the homes at the end of a four-unit, an eight-unit cluster on the right, or a twelve-unit cluster on the left. The end units are always angled with seventy feet of open space between them. That's what it looks like. This is a very clever way of breaking up the monotony of having homes one after the other. This is, you know, a closer-up view of what you just see. Better Road Farm in Lincoln, Massachusetts, is actually built at a higher density than what you'd probably expect in most parts of Waxaw. Five dwellings to the acre. That means a hundred twenty homes on twenty-four acres. They're served by public water and sewer. And this is what it looks like. It involves a lot of multifamily, but the multifamily is designed like a large New England farmhouse. Big house, little house, back house, barn, connected architecture. And you can see that in these building shapes, that they're connected, you know, homes are connected to each other. And each unit there, each overall house has four units in it. So that's what these look like in an aerial photograph. There's a village green on the right-hand center and the rest is forest. That's the village green. You get a little bit of a better idea of what the homes look like. And you see the ones that are facing onto the green. Well, here's what it looked like on the ground. This is five dwellings to the acre. It is all New England architecture. They rebuilt New England walls. They planted New England trees. But this could be done in any region of the country. This is a project which is one-third affordable, one-fourth senior, and one-fourth market rate. I'm wondering what the background noise is. The town chose the site, took an option on it because it wanted to have control whether this big project was going to go. So they took an option on the hundred twenty acres, put an ad in the Boston Globe inviting proposals and RFP. This is what we want. We want a hundred twenty homes, forty affordable, forty senior, forty market rate. And we want them designed in the New England style. We want it to have a village green. And admit your proposals, please. They got twelve proposals and they chose the best. About three or four were excellent. One stood out, and this is the one. So this is, you know, at five to the acre, you can have that kind of result. These are ten to the acre, and I just want to show you what can be done in case you want to go to that level. These are pocket neighborhoods. That's totally market rate. And they're usually ten or twelve units around a village green with garages, access to rear driveways, like an alley, but rear driveways. And these are great little social units. They're very upscale in most cases. And most of them you'll find in the Seattle area, although they're spreading out around the country. There is an example in Boulder, Colorado. Fourteen units on one point four acres, ten to the acre, and it's all affordable. So this can be done as affordables. This is the one in Boulder, Colorado. They're, those are ten to the acre. And they've got the same rear garage and rear driveway arrangement with a central green in the middle. And this is what it looks like. So you could have affordable housing, totally affordable. Or these could be totally senior. Or this could get mixed. But this is what you can do with design standards that tell the developer, "If you want this, you know, extra density, you've got to follow these design standards for pocket neighborhoods and their architecture buildings." This is from South Carolina, just a one example. Not a new idea. These are classic nineteen twenties neighborhoods. Two from North Carolina, one from Florida, one from Pennsylvania, and one from Texas. So this is Cameron Park, one of my favorite places in Raleigh. This is in Burlington, it is called Willbrook Park, Burlington, Carolina. This is what it looks like. This is sort of like the pocket neighborhood, but the streets are in front. These are wonderful neighborhoods that have appreciated in value enormously. They're a century old and they're all designed around central open space. This is Duck Pond Park in Gainesville, Florida. Norbrook Park in Norbrook, Pennsylvania. Now, this is actually nineteen fourteen, so it's a little bit older. And this is Het Hill Park in Austin. My daughter lives in Austin, so I learned about this during one of my visits. So this is something that you haven't seen much in the last one hundred years. And it's because towns got off on the wrong foot in the fifties, sixties, and seventies with conventional zoning. Now, the creative design techniques that I'd like to finish the slideshow with essentially are terminal vistas, boulevards with special features, crescent streets, closes, attached greens, greenway streets, and foreground meadows. Many of these are, can be seen in new urban developments. Terminal vistas, McConnell Green, McConnell subdivision in Davidson, I think, is an excellent example. If you come down, straight down from the main road at the top, the green is at the end of your vista. And as you continue down along that road, down to the right, Ashby Drive, the open space is on the right-hand side, which means that it's in your view shed as you round that curve in either direction. The homes are not in your view shed, the open space is. So the important idea is to have the, the open space on the outside edge of a, of a curving road, or the end of a straight street is a terminal vista. Here's another example, and that is from Charleston, I believe. No, no, Memphis, Tennessee. And this is the terminal vista. You notice the Charleston type houses along the street, fairly narrow. Boulevards can be designed around natural features. This was a ditch between two barren cotton fields. Imagine how much imagination was needed to create this from two cotton fields and a ditch in the middle. It was a landscape architect that came up with this design. That's why landscape architects, I think, should be the design professional doing step one and step two. And the engineer can come in step three and step four. This is another example of a boulevard with a stream in the middle. This is from Franklin, Tennessee. Another one from Franklin, Tennessee, not with a stream, but a hedgerow in the middle of the boulevard. So it preserves part of the former agricultural landscape and creates instant landscaping with mature trees in the middle of the development. One of the developers in Chattanooga area saw my slideshow and created this. I didn't see this till years later. This is right across the eight line in northern, northern Georgia. And this is a subdivision he created after seeing the possibilities shown in my slideshow. Crescent streets are like the one in the upper left-hand corner, again from McConnell at Davidson. And there are ways of inserting a little bit of open space to really relieve the monotony of all that asphalt, all those driveways and all those garage doors. Here's another crescent. It's on the bottom side of the lane called Hedger Lane. Sometimes a crescent can be used as a way of calming traffic between one street and another. Usually, developers prefer this cul-de-sac, but they get more value from more lots while introducing the crescent. And it also, you know, keeps this short street as a low-traffic area with high value. These are, this is an example of, you know, a crescent street in an affordable housing project in, in Virginia. This is, are an odd way of referring to looping street. This is from a nineteen oh-eight book, Town Planning and Practice, published in England. And the new urbanists saw that and they created this idea of a cloche, which is a Scottish word. If you go to Edinburgh, Scotland, you'll see a lot of closes along their high street that connects the palace and the, and the, and the castle. I lived in Edinburgh for three years, so I know it very well. And the word cloche in US parlance simply means a looping cul-de-sac with a, with a boulevard green down the middle. That's notable for stormwater. Here's what two closes look like on that the other. So it's an alternative to the boring cul-de-sac. It's a one-way loop, so it doesn't have to be a wide street around it. It's a one-way street. And the one-way street can be pitched toward the middle. And the middle can become a rain garden planted with red maple trees, for instance, that like, or sycamores that like that extra moisture. Another example of a very short cloche on the lower left. And here are two closes end to end. There's a cloche on the right and a cloche on the left, basically looping lanes. This is from Tera Maria in Howard County, Maryland. Neighborhood greens that are bounded by streets will have homes with rear-entry garages. And this is an example, village green in the middle, bounded by a street. And the closes as well. Asbury Park in Louisville, Kentucky. And this is from Virginia. This is an affordable housing project in, in the Newport News area. Notice the greenway. Notice the lake, which is your stormwater area. And notice the open space on the left-hand side, which is a terminal vista. So this is an affordable housing project, quite a large one, in Newport News. Foreground meadows is a way to maintain rural character and buffer homes from existing roads. So instead of having houses back up to an existing road, which is what the original design in Weddington was, that I began the slideshow with, instead of having houses back up to an existing road, they're turned around so they front onto the existing road but are separated from it by some protected open space. This is an example from Ohio. This is an example from Kennybunk, Maine. Here is an example that I showed, that I drew to show the normal way of backing homes up to a road at the top and at the bottom, inverting that. So the, the same number of homes, the same sized house lots, the same density can be done in the way shown on the bottom, where homes front onto a meadow and then front on, basically face onto the main road. So you don't go down the road looking into people's backyards or into a fence. The proper way to design, in my view, and the view of many planners, is to have the homes faced toward the road, either with driveways onto the road or back up behind these foreground meadows. Isn't it? At the bottom of this picture is a foreground meadow from Lake County, Florida, in a development I designed about twenty years ago. And the, there was a cluster of trees in the middle, which made designing it pretty easy. I said, "Well, we just do a road around the trees and that's your central park." And wherever else we have trees, we try to avoid them. And we had all the homes face the, the main road at the bottom, but across a three-hundred-foot foreground meadow. That's what that looked like. Now, in developments with open space where lots are narrower, garages should either be side-entry or preferably front-entry recessed. In other words, garages should not be, you know, close to the street. Because if they are close to the street, they will visually dominate in higher-density developments with narrower lots. So here is a side-entry garage that looks great from the street. And another side-entry garage on an upscale house by Toll Brothers in Texas, that, three-car garage, in fact, that is on a fifty-foot lot. From Philadelphia suburbs, again, you don't see the garage doors from the street. That's coming into the garage door from the side. Now, here you see the garage door from the street, but it's recessed behind the plane of the house and the front porch. So if you can't do a, anything else, this is a way of subordinating the garage door. Again, putting that by a design standard, a minimum setback of the garage that is fifteen feet larger than the maximum setback for the, for the front door or the porch. Unless you do that, houses in narrow lots are usually built with protruding, front-facing, sorry about the spelling, front-facing garages dominating the streetscape. These houses that have garages that protrude really are avoidable. I, I have bought one, I've lived in one. It was not a matter of choice, it was more a matter of what was on the market at the time. Now, even when you have houses that are two-family, or three-family, or four-family, they all can be required to have rear-entry garages, access to back lanes that are generally private common driveways. So here's a duplex house from Eagle, Colorado, and another duplex house from Eagle, Colorado. Where's the second front door? The second front door is to the right of the, of the door that you, you see. And it's, it's recessed, so it's not visually dominant. Here's a duplex from Dover, Delaware, but they, but it really looks like two single-family homes if you look at it casually. Here's a three-family from Fort Mill, South Carolina, Dover, Delaware. Eagle, Colorado, that's a three-family. They're more contemporary now. Another view of the same one. And back to Lincoln, Massachusetts, these are the four families that present themselves with no garage doors facing the street. And this is a sort of close-up of what this big house, little house, back house, barn arrangement looks like with four units in the red house and four units in the sort of brownish house. And that's how they get that density. Three garages confront directly onto neighborhood greens. This is an important point. You don't need a street. You don't need street frontage. These are called attached greens. So your ordinance would say, "We don't need street frontage if your lot directly abuts a neighborhood green." And of course, if it does, the access is going to be through the back. This is from the Detroit suburbs. And there's a village green in the middle and all the homes on the top face directly onto them with just a sidewalk in between. The homes on the south face the village green, but the street is in between. That's what this looks like. These homes are on forty, fifty, and sixty-foot lots. This is from Tera Maria in Maryland. Eagle family homes fronting onto a green with rear-access garages. A three-family home from southeastern Pennsylvania, fronting onto a green. I'm standing on the sidewalk, behind me is the street. So that's the street view. No garages. In Ion, which is in Charleston, I think, South Carolina, no, or anyways, in South Carolina, I for, it might not be in Charleston. The homes front directly onto these ponds, which were a pre-existing feature of the property. The home is front directly onto these ponds, which were a pre-existing feature of the property. Sidewalks and shade tree planting are really important, not only along streets, but also along alleys. This is a street that is crying out for sidewalks, narrower pavement, uh, and shade trees. Like this. Where would you rather live? Would you rather live there? Or would you rather live here? This is from, um, Fort Mill, I believe. Another one from Fort Mill, Baxter. This is from Celebration near, uh, Orlando. And here's a couple that's walking the street. There's no sidewalks to pull their kid in the wagon. So how crazy is that? They've got an ultra-wide street and no sidewalks. Back lanes with shade trees, uh, look a lot better than back lanes without shade trees. So if you have alleys or back lanes in your design standards, please consider adding shade trees to the, to the required, uh, improvements. Because those alleys will look really nice, uh, with the shade trees as they mature. Uh, here's another aerial example where you can see the, the, the back lane. There's the crescent, then there's the back lane, then there's the street. And the back lane and the street have shade trees. Greenway streets are like an attached green where the houses front directly onto it, but on both sides. This is from Celebration near Orlando. And this is a short connecting street between two, uh, streets which go left to right at each end of the stream, uh, the green. The developer saves money. People love it. They pay a little bit more for it. There's less road leaving to, for the community to, uh, uh, maintain. The home association takes care of the grass. What's not to like about it? You can make, you can do these block after block after block. This is a one-off. And that's what it looks like in Celebration. It's just one segment that might be three-hundred feet long, four-hundred feet at most. Another example from Celebration. But you could link these together. This is also from the Orlando area, but not Celebration. So you get one greenway street and another and another and another and another. And that is a great way to have greenways through your community, through the development. You can link homes to schools, homes to shops, homes to libraries, homes to other neighborhoods. Your kids don't sure have to go on a street, except they cross the street every four-hundred feet. I can't think of a better way to design a development than with greenway streets. And when you have the narrow lots, uh, that will have the alleys, um, this is a way to do it. There's, there's no problem at all. This is what it looks like on the ground. Uh, it's another version of that. Not a new idea. St. James Court in Louisville dates from the eighteen seventies, I think. This is, the idea's been around for, you know, like a hundred and fifty years. And we could have this a lot by putting these standards into our codes. So I was asked to speak for forty-five minutes and, uh, I could go on longer. Uh, but I think that I've given you a lot of, uh, meat to digest, a lot of food for thought. What I like to do is, you know, we go back to our, uh, videos where we're looking at each other and we can ask, you can ask questions and I'll answer them. And the way this is structured, there'll be a follow-up, uh, probably in early April. I'm going on a vacation between now and then. And, uh, we can have follow-up questions, uh, follow-up discussion at that time. So, uh, click to exit. I can get out of my PowerPoint right now. And I might also add that you will have a video version of this. Um, it's all been recorded, so anybody wanting to replay it, or someone that missed it today, can play it. And Lisa and, uh, Janet will have the PowerPoint without the audio. But if you'd like, if you'd say, "I'd like to see those pictures again of greenway streets," or "Attached greens," or, uh, whatever it was, the four-step process, they can easily, you know, access those pictures on the PowerPoint. So there are a whole lot of ways going forward to keep these, uh, you know, ideas, uh, in, in, uh, circulation. So I'm going to stick out of the PowerPoint right now if I can.
You want to stop the sharing? You're still sharing.
I'm ready for questions and answers.
Do you want to click Stop Share? And that'll open up the screen.
Yeah, I, uh, stopped sharing. Oh, there it goes.
Um, I have one question, um, maybe best practice. Joan Island is one of our landscape architects. He's got a project going on through town. Um, a lot of times developers want to know the yield that they can get before, you know, purchasing and going through contract and before spending a lot of money. So by the time they come to us, they already have a, a plan drawn up. Are there any, like, best practices, maybe even coming from Bujo or Randall, that you've seen? Is it, is it a meeting with, like, the local developing, developers, local engineers and architects? Um, what's best, best practice so that they're not coming to us with a, a plan that they want to push through as soon as possible?
I think the best practice would be very clear in the ordinance to say that this process begins with a sketch plan, a low-cost sketch plan, that has got very little engineering to it. And if the developers bring in anything else, it's at their own risk, because the town does not want to see, the town does not want to see, uh, any kind of fully-developed plan on the first date. I mean, this is going to be a wedding down the road. It's going to be a wedding, because the developer's going to get, uh, um, approval for something the town is going to be married to for the next hundred years. So it's never good to begin, uh, uh, a wedding without a proper engagement. So the proper engagement begins with the sketch plan and the sidewalk. And if he wants to kind of, for his own purposes, on his own nickel, determine how many houses he can get, his engineer can do that for a very, very, very low figure. I do it all the time. You look at the land, you, 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 you see what the potential development density is, the house lot size, and you design it around, um, the wetlands, the steep slopes, the, um, the, the power lines, anything which is unbuildable. Then you, you get a, a sketch plan for a conventional. So in a, if he's doing three to the acre, he would knock out thirteen thousand square foot lots on a sketch, cheap sketch, not engineered, thirteen thousand square foot lots that don't mess with the wetlands or the floodplains or the steep slopes or the power lines. And that can be done for a couple of thousand dollars, unless it's a massive development. It's just really, really easy.
And to your point, we have a R-four subdivision. It's, you know, four, it's supposed to be four units per acre, or you could get up to four, maybe five units per acre. But when they do their yield plan, after they take out their road, infrastructure, tree save, open space, all of that, we're really averaging like two and a half. So that yield plan is very important to know that number that you're working with from, from the get-go. Not to just say, "Okay, you can have four, reduce your lots and give me fifty percent open space." They can at least use that conventional plan to, to know what their yield is.
Yeah. I have a, a section in the model ordinance that I gave to, uh, Janet and Lisa. It's called density determination. And in it is the yield plan. And the yield plan is, you tell the, tell the developers in the ordinance, the first step is a, a yield plan. It's not engineered. And it shows, uh, the number of homes, the number of lots you could get in, uh, conventionally, avoiding wetlands, floodplains, steep slopes, power lines, that kind of thing. And that becomes the number, whatever that number is, thirty, sixty, a hundred, uh, as long as it passes a straight face test, uh, which means that he does, he's not putting in lots or streets that are clearly unbuildable. So he comes in with this cheap and dirty, uh, quick and dirty, um, sketch plan showing the maximum number of conventional lots that he can get. And then you say, "Okay, that's your, your number." So let's go and instead of having thirteen thousand square foot lots in the R-three, for instance, on your sketch plan, let's go for the fifty percent open space, which would mean your lots are trimmed back to maybe six and a half, seven thousand square feet. And then we can, uh, uh, proceed with a conceptual sketch with those six to seven thousand square foot lots, uh, at whatever the, the yield is. And then you walk the property and see whether that works well, uh, or doesn't with regard to the landscape features. There might be graves, might be trees, might be view sheds, might be existing house on the property, some historic feature, uh, barn, well, whatever. So I think it should be clear to developers, they begin with the density determination yield plan, cheap and dirty, quick and dirty, sorry, and very inexpensive. And they, they come to you with that, that you approve the number, whatever number that is. And then they go back and create a, um, an open space plan, the fifty percent open space, based on that number. I know what developers like to do. They like to get everything lined up and, uh, uh, present you with a little complete. They don't realize that this is a marriage that requires an engagement. They just want to rush from a, a first date to, to the wedding ceremony. And that, that is, that doesn't make sense in life. It doesn't make sense in municipal affairs. They're, they're trying to force something onto you and, and push you at an accelerated pace for their own reasons. And you have your own reason, you've got the law, to push back and say, "You're jumping the gun. We've got to go back to square one." And you have the right to do that. Uh, but I, I say the, the regulation should identify the yield plan as the, uh, the first stop.
Thank you. Questions?
Hi, I'm just a citizen of Waxahau, but I have ancestors from Waxahau. The Davis side was like the first mayor and postmaster and teachers. They had indoor plumbing, Main Street. And then the other side of the tracks was my Rome side who had outdoor plumbing, but they were farmers, teachers, and minister. Is there a protection plan for like, like, my sisters and I own like five to six acres on Rehoboth Road. We found Indian pottery, Indian arrowheads growing up on our, on our land. And then my aunt told me there was a baby infant, Indian buried on the land. If we find more stuff, I mean, we're leaving it for woods, for the deer now, but if we find stuff, is there a plan to protect native Swasaki Indian for our land? Our land backs up behind the preserves, which there's a little park. And then my other question is, is there, um, I, I want to see both sides of the tracks protected from my ancestors. Like, my cousin sold land to Edward Gielam behind my great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather, the first mayor's house, which was Frankie's cousin. And, and I know a lot of people like it, a lot of people don't, but I like it because the older people can move downtown Waxahau. They can't, they're not young, they want to, uh, they want to witness maybe, you know, green acres, uh, mentality, but they can't farm big lands and stuff like that. But I want to protect them and the rights of the builders to do those nice condos and stuff, but, but in a nice way. But protect the farmers too, that own the lands on the other side. Because I do have a cousin right off Sims Road that has a hundred, hundred and twenty acres, no heirs. They have my, they're, you know, I can talk to them, they listen to me. I just need a protection of legacy and vision ideas for both sides of the track. I know that's a lot of questions, but mainly is the Native American Indian artifact on our property? What kind of plans, is there a plan, developer kind of plan for that?
The, the, the town can list in its, uh, ordinance, um, the types of open space that should be preserved. They prioritize them. Some towns will prioritize historic sites, other towns will preserve, prioritize farmland, others will prioritize woodland habitat. So that's the, the part of the code where the, the town says fifty percent open space should protect the, uh, these kinds of resources in this kind of priority order. Now, if your first priority is for farmland or for historic resource or whatever, and the entire site is, uh, covered by that resource, you are, are forced to choose which parts of the site are the most significant. Which parts of that resource are the most important to preserve? Uh, because half the land will be developed, the other half will be preserved. But prioritizing the kinds of resources that should be designed around and protected is, is part of the ordinance, whether it be a historic or cultural, or, uh, agricultural, or, um, ecological reason. I, I've seen towns, um, make very different choices. And, and that, that's, that's good, because we don't have, you know, county-wide, uh, decision that only this should be preserved or only that should be preserved. So I hope that's helpful. I, I think that a sidewalk and involving people that know the property historically can be very important on that sidewalk when you're evaluating which resources, uh, should be most, um, protected. Uh, I, I, I'm, that's about all I can, can add on that.
Jeff?
Thank you for the presentation this morning. Have, have a question from the, the regulatory side and what I've seen historically with, with clustering subdivisions. Yes, you reduce the dimensional requirements, uh, to a smaller footprint. But what we have found historically is that still provides some constraints to developers to still have some type of minimum lot width and separation from the homes. With this, with this, uh, type of development, is there, uh, is it imperative that you still have dimensional requirements in that smaller footprint? Perhaps you give them more flexibility to, uh, to design, uh, within that footprint? Or if you do still need to have some type of minimum, uh, dimensional requirements, is there at least some flexibility from the zoning administrator to deviate from that when the circumstances, topography, ge- geography, uh, might be beneficial to do so?
Well, I'm afraid I didn't catch a lot of that. It sounded like your voice is breaking up as if you were, as if you were on a cellphone call out in the country. And I apologize for that.
I hope I can remember the question again.
Another microphone. Repeat the, the essence of that, please.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll try to remember the question and then ask it again. So, uh, historically, uh...
You need to talk into the owl. Talk into the app.
Okay.
Then he can hear you.
So historically, uh, where I've worked, we've had clustering in our subdivision requirements. They've always required, uh, to have dimensional requirements, not just in the conventional subdivision, but also in the clustering subdivision standards. And what we have historically run into with having the, the smaller dimensional requirements, the clustering, while it, it's good for the most part, it still provides some constraints to developers to get the, uh, the original conventional yield. In, in your, uh, conservation subdivisions, do you still think that minimum-type dimensional requirements are necessary? And if so, I mean, is there some flexibility with, uh... Uh, and if so, I mean, is there some flexibility with, uh, zoning administrator to be able to deviate from that when topography, geography, things like that might require, uh, something more beneficial by design from, from doing that?
Good, really good question. Um, I think that my, my concern being more on the other end, maximum, with maximum lot size. Uh, I don't have a, a problem with developers making something smaller for a house lot, um, as long, because my main concern are, is twofold. Number one, that the, the yield be, you know, not more than what you could get with a conventional plan. So, that, that the building number is my primary concern. And, uh, an equal primary concern is the quantity, the quality, the configuration of the open space. I have much lesser concerns about, uh, house lot width, um, setbacks, lot size, because I believe that developers are gonna be very careful not to push the envelope too far, because they still want to sell those units and they want to sell the units for, you know, as much as they can, obviously. So, they're not going to shoot themselves in the foot and make things too, uh, small or unsellable. I would not have concerns about that. So, you, you might not even need to have minimum, uh, lot sizes or, or minimum widths. You might want to have, uh, something like a minimum spacing between buildings if they're all gonna be built at the same time, that's easy to do. Um, like, it might be fifteen feet, might be twenty feet or whatever, minimum space between, between, uh, residential buildings. But I, I, I hear you when you say sometimes a site is a, you know, a little bit, um, has some constraints and maybe the developer wants to, uh, vary his lot sizes. I think that's fine, as long as two things, uh, as long as he's not violating two things. Number one is the maximum number of units and the other is the minimum amount of open space. As long as he's within those two parameters, I think flexibility is great.
Okay, well-
That, that, that new mic was, was great, by the way. Thank you.
Yeah.
It'll hold.
Randall, thanks for the presentation. I thought it was really great. It's, it's good to hear, uh, a, a, a refreshing perspective. I was trained as in LA and, uh, it's, uh, it's always nice to hear someone else have similar values, uh, that, that I was, uh, trained with in school and try to, um, capture in professional work. So, it's nice to hear that I'm not the only crazy person in the room talking about incorporating open space and things like that. The biggest thing for us when we're designing sites that I think really comes down from code perspective and the LDC at Waxahachie is tree save requirements, minimum percentage of tree save requirements. And also, you talked about open space, but I don't think it's enough to have a minimum percentage of open space per se, but really it's more of how many diff- like, for example, if you only require thirty percent open space and the developer's gonna wanna maximize the lots, we're gonna put it around the peripheries, it's gonna be unusable, it's not gonna be incorporated into the, um, into the overall development as you have on many of your graphics. Uh, so, I think if you put in place a minimum area, like you gotta have three or four, um, different open spaces that are non-contiguous, I think that would really help put in place better plans, you know, ultimately. So, if you, you know, had four spaces that you need to put in, that way they're not, the open space is not just, you know, around the, the peripheries of the site and it, it's, you know, basically just count the, the open spaces, what's left over. And I think that's a lot less valuable than having the very purposefully designed, uh, smaller green spaces incorporated throughout plan.
That's the difference between a cluster s- close enough, the cluster subdivision and a conservation subdivision is where we're finding those open spaces we wanna preserve first and then doing the design around those. And that's what was happening in, in Weddington as well. They had very large roadside buffers, which was important to them, um, but it would just force all the lots to the back of the property that may have, uh, a good stream or pond or something historic that we wanna save. So, that's what's good about this and the four-step process. Um, it's just a matter of getting it into the ordinance and getting it incorporated.
Hello. I guess my question would be, are developers interested in this type of, uh, conservation subdivision if it's at a lower density or is their goal only for higher density?
Are, are we still using the, uh, the better microphone? Cause I didn't understand that very well.
My question was, are developers interested in this type of conservation subdivision at lower densities or is their main focus high density only?
Most of my work has been at the lower densities, uh, and most of the new urbanist work has been at the higher densities, which is why I showed a blend, um, in many of the examples toward the end of, you know, the Greenway Streets, the attached greens, the, um, um, Four Round Meadows and all of that. Developers can build good developments at, at any density. And if you go back to those nineteen twenties examples, the half dozen or so, the oil done by developers a hundred years ago that saw the, the, the value, even with small lot development and public water and sewer to having that open space. Now, out in the country, many developers still think people just want a one acre lot or they want a two acre lot, they want a five acre lot, because that's what they've been served up, uh, for the past forty years. But if you actually speak with the people, um, in those large lot developments, um, some of them can't wait to get out of them, uh, because the, the hours they spend mowing their lawns and there's no sense of community. So, some, there are still a number of developers who are kind of stuck in the rut of large lot development. Um, and, and that was where we, Lisa and I and others in Weddington worked together on that, uh, Stratford Hall development, which I, I hope they can visit it sometime. Um, because we didn't need one acre lots there. They, they, they sold better at, uh, at a third the size. Uh, few people had more of a sense of community and had this great open space and it just had a great rural feel to it. So, it's a good question. Um, and fortunately, the conservation design can be done out in the country or, uh, closer in where we have, where we expect higher densities. There are extreme examples I could show too. There's a, an island, uh, in New York Harbor called Randall's Island, no, no relation. But that, that's about fifty percent open space and the way they did it was to build vertically like twenty, thirty-story apartment buildings. And the rest is municipal soccer fields and football fields and ball fields. So, that's the way New York City, uh, developed, uh, Randall Island with, I think about forty, fifty percent open space by going vertically. So, you can do this at almost any scale.
First, uh, thank you very much for your presentation today and taking the time to, um, to join us and, uh, and give us this information here on, on a new perspective, in my opinion, on how to go about, or, or essentially reviving a perspective on how to go about preserving open space. I have a couple of questions, uh, I'll, I'll start with one. Have you seen any municipalities essentially implement technology, specifically drones, um, as part of the process to evaluate open space? Um, and then, cause I know you, you talked about essentially walking the lot, but from a planning perspective and a planning board advisory perspective, uh, we don't always have that opportunity to go out and visit an individual lot. And so, how, how have you seen planning staff be able to essentially access those sidewalks? Um, and then the additional question that I have really goes into, uh, have you s- how have you seen other municipalities, um, weigh the options on where to preserve and how did, how have they structured those ordinances for preservation? Or is it a site-by-site, um, uh, site-by-side analysis?
Good question, Seth. It's a blend of what the ordinance would prioritize. So, we, we, uh, in general, would like to prioritize the preservation of this resource first, second, this resource second, this resource third, fourth. Uh, in southeastern Pennsylvania, for example, it's mostly willing to preserve the woodlands and the stream valleys, um, and will build on the farmland. And in New England, it's the opposite. And there are reasons for that. In New England, we don't have much farmland left. There was a lot of farmland a hundred and fifty years ago, but it was abandoned because it was thin and this bearing season was short and it grew up to woods. So, we're mostly woods in New England. And a farm field is therefore very special. So, up here, we'd say, "Let's put the homes in the woods and preserve that precious meadow or pasture or farm field." And in Pennsylvania, it's the opposite. Um, they have tons of farmland, uh, in the developing counties around Philadelphia and not much woodland because the farmland was good. And the, what was cleared off in William's Pen Day, William Penn's Day is largely cleared now. So, the only, uh, trees that are left are these fragments, uh, these wooded stream valleys and, uh, uh, adjoining lands to those wooded stream valleys. So, the opposite view was taken in, in the Philly suburbs. Uh, on our, in the southern states, sometimes, more often than not, it's the historical aspects which are, which rise to the surface, especially if there are any Civil War, uh, battlefields or, uh, or roadways, um, that kinda thing. So, the ordinance gives you a framework for what, how to prioritize the conservation choices. Then the sidewalk enables you to sharpen the pencil, so to speak, because the sidewalk, uh, is the way that you can experience the, the, the land most directly. Your feet are on the ground, you're walking at a slow pace, you're taking note of, uh, the size, not only the size of the trees, but maybe the health of the trees. Uh, there might be a big tree that's not worth saving. You can see up at the top, it's dying back or it's covered with vines, um, or it's got some blight, um, or it has a big limb off of it and that's where it's going to get infected. There's really no substitute for a sidewalk. Now, I was introduced to this novel idea of a sidewalk fifty years ago, or maybe not quite, but forty-five years ago, I guess, in the town of York, Maine. And they said, uh, "You know, we're gonna go out for a sidewalk and, uh, you, you're gonna join us as your, as your planner." And I said, "Okay, sounds like fun." And, and it was. But there were people of retirement age, uh, and, and older who went on these sidewalks who would walk and scramble over the logs or climb over the stone walls, uh, and the only time of the year we didn't do it was when the snow was thick on the ground. I learned from that experience that it was impossible to tell by looking at a three-dimensional plan in a, in a meeting room. And the drone idea is a good one. It's sort of like a moving aerial photograph. I like aerial photographs when they're superimposed with topography, cause I can really tell a lot about the property, but I can't tell anything in detail, but I can tell in general, uh, where the best slopes are to, to develop and to avoid and where the pine trees are, which are more expendable than the deciduous trees in almost any region of the country. Uh, you know, the, the pines are less, less valued. Uh, that's a generalization, but certainly in New England, if I've got a standard white pines and a standard hardwood maples, I'm gonna try to avoid the hardwood maples, um, even though the white pine is a state tree. Uh, it's, it's, it's too abundant. Um, I really like to see sidewalks done by planning board members. Um, I remember going to Charleston, North, uh, Charleston, Charles Town, Rhode Island once, not far from ours at the time, and I said, "Let's schedule a sidewalk." And they said, "We've never done one." And I said, "Well, humor me, let's go out for one." "Oh, we don't really need it, can't we just get on?" I said, "No, just, let's go out once, okay?" After they went out on that sidewalk, they told me, "We're never gonna do it differently ever again, because there's so much that we learned by walking the property slowly and asking questions and discussing things with each other." It's almost magical. You, you, it, it, it's, uh, I, I think that the, the difference between going on a date and trading emails. You know, you, you get to know a person properly. You'd never hire a person for a job in your, in your talent government or your business on the basis of a resume or just a phone call. You, you want to have some face time, um, with that person, um, and the more, the better. So, I, I really have to keep face time with the sub- business. And I know some people have, you know, a disability, that's fine, we understand, they don't have to come. Other people are on vacation, other people are sick, other people travel on business. That's all understood. But hopefully, there'll be a majority of planning board member, planning commission members that'll always be there, um, in addition to staff, um, who will look at this in, in ways that are a little bit different from the lay member of a planning board or commission. So, I know it's a, it's a big ask, but try it. Uh, I, 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 I know that the dividends are there.
Hi, uh, you mentioned the permanent protection of the open spaces. I'm just wondering if those have ever worked out to be less than permanent? Um, you know, I know that you mentioned the process of the, uh, uh, the ordinances on the local government and then falling to the HOA as well. Has anyone ever actually, uh, modified these open green spaces?
Modified them?
Has, has anybody, has anybody ever actually gone through the process, whatever, however onerous it is, to, uh, either build on the green space or make it smaller?
Oh, uh, after the fact, after the open space is protected, have there been instances where the open space has been compromised, uh, people doing things on it that they shouldn't?
Right. Well, not, not that they shouldn't, but you know, uh, going through the legal process to either make it smaller or remove it.
Oh, to, to lift the, like, uh, not that I know of, because conservation easement's run with the chain of title in perpetuity, protected by law. Um, you have to go to a court of law and make a showing of, of why that easement is no longer necessary, I guess. If the town and the, uh, uh, home association agrees that, uh, um, the easement should be changed, uh, maybe it's to clear a section of pine trees to create a ball field. Or maybe the town wants to access a large open space and say, "Can we have, uh, an acre or two of this large open space for a small municipal building or for a small, uh, a municipal ball field?" Yes, I, I think that you could do that. Uh, it's a bit of an onerous process, but without that easement in place, it becomes too open for, uh, abuse. And, uh, I recommend that permanent conservation easement, which runs with the title. Uh, if it's held by the town government, it becomes less onerous to change. And there's a good side to that and there's a bad side to that. The good side is if there's a, you know, a- The good side is if there's a, you know, a, a really good municipal reason and it's not a big incursion to the open space, you can undo, uh, an acre or two or three out of a thirty, forty acre open space for municipal use. Unfortunate thing is that often in the future, there may be, you know, political leaders who disagree with it and think that, uh, the best thing to do would be develop that open space and get more tax dollars. Although that's a misconception, you'd never get more tax dollars from development unless it's non-residential. There, there's a caveat to that. There are a, a few forms of residential that actually pay their way. Uh, the others don't and are subsidized by the commercial and industrial taxes. The one, the housing that pays their way are age restricted with no schoolchildren. Uh, season housing, which is only occupied for three or four months of the year. And super large houses that pay a lot in taxes because they're, you know, they're, they're mansions. But otherwise, you know, a municipal official that's looking to develop land to increase the open space should be thinking commercial, should be thinking industrial. Um, so I would, I would say that maybe, uh, you, you could have these conservation easements held by the town government. Uh, some towns in New England have them held by the, the town conservation commission, uh, so they don't have to go to a court of law to be undone. Uh, it gives you some flexibility and it gives you the safeguards that you need so that the integrity of the easement will be respected. I, I think that, oh, answers the question.
Mayor, are you good? Or you wanna do one more? Get to our time.
I can add more.
Yeah, I, if there are any other questions out there, just last chance here. Um, I got all my questions answered. This has been very informative. Thank you very much, Randall. This has been great. Um, this, this gives us a lot of hope for how to develop moving in the future, I think. So it's very uplifting.
Okay, you're very welcome. I thank particularly Lisa and Janet for reaching out and, and thinking, uh, a- a- about involving me in this. Uh, I think we'll probably meet again via Teams or Zoom, um, maybe in about a month's time, uh, if you wish, uh, or later if you wish. Um, and if there comes a time when you'd like the first subdivision coming through the process to be done the way that Stratford Hall was, that was Weddington's very first. Uh, I, the thing I enjoy the most is, uh, walking the land and sorting out the, uh, the conservation and development possibilities with the local officials, um, and with the developer or the applicant. Uh, so I could, you know, hop on a plane and come down to Charlotte and, uh, help you out on your first, uh, development if, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Close the meeting and get motion.
All right. Could I get a motion to adjourn this meeting? Meeting. All in favor? We are so adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.